Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is March 12, 2018. We are in committee meeting this evening. We have four committees to present. City Service Safety Committee followed by Finance and Personnel Committee, then Transportation Committee and Committee of the Whole. I am acting as President Pro Tem this evening. Our President Naisley is out with Mayor Patterson, so our Law Director Lisa Eliasen is our Acting Mayor. We'll begin with City Service Safety Committee. First of all, we have a presentation this evening from a compost pilot project, and this is a zero-waste initiative. So Andrea Rainey is going to be presenting this evening. I believe we have PowerPoint, is that correct? Thank you.
Does it, can you see it? Should it, oh, should it come up on the screen?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Council, for having me tonight. As Councilmember Butler said, my name is Andrea Rainey, and I am the Zero Waste Program Manager for Rural Action. And also here in attendance tonight is Erin Sykes, who's the Zero Waste Program Director. And we would like to present a little bit of information about a project that we've been working on with city administrators over the past year to hopefully implement a compost curbside recycling, or compost curbside program in Athens. So this, discussions of this pilot came out of some concerns that were raised in 2016 around the excess of funds that have built up in the city's trash and recycling fund. And among other recommendations such as improving multifamily unit recycling and also recycling services in the Uptown franchise area, one recommendation was to explore the possibility of implementing a compost collection service in Athens for residents. So over the past year, we've worked with some city administrators to share some best practices that we've researched from communities across the country and put together these recommendations for what a pilot program could look like in Athens. So first off, in terms of recruitment for the program, and also just to be clear, this would be, what I'm talking about here is just a pilot program, not a full-fledged program yet throughout the city, but the hope would be that, you know, eventually we would implement that full-fledged program. So our goal for recruitment for this pilot project is to have 200 to 300 families participating throughout citywide, and this program would take place for six months. So ideally, I put a map up here of the City Council wards. This would kind of represent how the trash and recycling is collected already throughout the city. So per each of those sections, we would want about 50 to 75 families participating. And we would only be targeting mostly single-family residences, but also multifamily if their four units are under. Things get logistically challenging if it's over that because of the size. So we're going to do recruitment via lots of social media presence and online presence to promote enrollment in the program, and then also possibly some print materials as well. And some other ideas for promoting participation in the program would be to do something like, you know, the first 50 families to sign up would get a countertop kitchen compost bin that they could use in their home. So in terms of the servicing logistics, the resident will bring the container to the curb and remove it from the curb. They're responsible for that, just like trash and recycling, on the same day as their trash and recycling to make it easy to remember that this service exists. And as, as I said before, since the pickup would correspond with that trash and recycling pickup, it would be, take place on four days throughout the city, which would be Monday through Thursday. So the resident would be responsible for washing their own container, and I'll talk a little bit about the containers we've chosen in just a second. But just, you know, similar to trash and recycling containers, the resident is responsible for cleaning those out. The containers that we've chosen do have lids, and the lid will be placed on the container, should be on the container at the time of pickup by the resident, and also it will be replaced back onto the container by the service provider. And the crews that would be picking up this material will have retrofitted trucks that contain the food waste so that it's not, you know, they're waterproof lined so that it's not leaching at all on the streets and causing a mess. So as far as the containers, this, these five-gallon buckets are what Athens Hocking Organics uses for their pickup already, and it's found to be a very convenient container for people to use and also for the crews to pick up material out of. So these five-gallon buckets will be used in the pilot. They have handles and lids, as mentioned before. And also, an alternative that we've explored that the city is, is interested in is having a limited number of these small 13-gallon rolling carts that could be piloted with just maybe 20 or so families to see how those could be used. And they have wheels and a handle and a locking lid. But of course, those are also much more expensive than a regular five-gallon bucket. And also, on all of the containers, there will be a label listing the acceptable and unacceptable materials, as well as a place to put the address that the bucket belongs to. So as far as acceptable and unacceptable materials, these are the standard materials. If any of you use the service at the farmer's market, or even drop-off material at Athens Hocking Organics, these are the materials that they do accept. So all of your standard fruits and veggie scraps, and, you know, small amounts of meat and dairy and things like that are okay, just not bulk, as it says here, you know, large amounts of, of those items. And we, some communities do accept liners. We think that, based off of Athens Hocking Organics' processing system, they prefer not to have any kind of bio bag or compostable liner within the bag, but if a resident really doesn't want to be responsible for cleaning out the container, they could put in a paper bag, and that could just be dumped out of the container. Due to the size, the small size of the five-gallon bucket yard waste will not be accepted, and it's also not really a preferable material for the service provider, and no compostable service ware at this time. So education is, you know, your program is only going to be as successful as your education program is. So in order to successfully educate residents and participants of the program, you know, we'll invest resources in that. So postcards would be to promote participation and enrollment in the program, so those could be mailed out to residents within the city. And then those who do sign up will receive a welcome kit, similar to the kits that were distributed with the recycling carts that explain, you know, what this is and how to use your bin, you know, thank you for participating in the program. Couple of communities I talked with have something like a coupon packet, just to, you know, maybe discounts at local garden stores or wherever, just to kind of promote participation in the program, or coupons for countertop containers, things like that. So the, the other, another aspect to this is the correction and reward. So this is also kind of a similar technique that's used with the recycling carts. For residents who might not be putting in, you know, something, they might be putting in something that shouldn't be in the container, they would get an oops tag saying, you know, checking off the material that was incorrect, and asking them to correct the behavior for next time. And then also thank you carts for those who are doing a really great job composting. And I mentioned the, you know, possible idea of a, of a promotion before, getting a free container for their kitchen. And then, of course, social media and web promotion as well, that we would use to promote and educate. And just a few more things about the education. You know, it's important that that happens at the beginning of the program to give people an idea of what they're getting into, but also, education will need to continue throughout the duration of the pilot program. So this, you know, constant communication with participating residents will allow the city and the service provider to quickly address any issues that maybe a number of residents are having one particular issue, you know, communicating very clearly with residents on that. So yeah, some other ideas in additions, in addition to the ones I mentioned before would be, maybe there's a Facebook group for those families who are participating so that residents can share ideas and tips on how to compost more effectively in their home, and, you know, there would be an administrator for the group that can help answer questions. An email newsletter would also enable us to get information out to participants quickly and also solicit information back. So if people would like to share troubleshooting that they're having, or, you know, things that are going really well, hopefully they'll share lots of those, they could share that in an email survey. So, and that, of course, is a really important part for once the program concludes, to do a thorough evaluation of what went well, what would be changed if and when the city goes to a full-fledged citywide compost collection program. And I put examples up here of just the oops tag, and the, this is the postcard that was used for the recycling cart, which just would be a similar idea that residents would receive with the compost container. So the proposed timeline that we have come up with is, so May through July of this year, we would begin the recruitment process and promoting to residents that they have the option of opting into this program. And then hopefully by August, we would start the official pilot period, which would continue through January. And one of the advantages to this time period is that we would be conducting the pilot under different weather conditions, so that helps to give the service provider just an idea of what challenges might arise in various different weather, weather conditions. Then, a couple of months after that, January through February of next year, surveying the participants to see what went well and what they would recommend we change for a fuller program. And then the next year would be preparing for a launch of that full-fledged program. And during that time, we could work out the pilot participants still receiving their compost service that they had before. So, you know, that would mean working out the terms of the contract, doing a similar education process that this is rolling out to all city residents, purchasing the needed supplies, developing the fuller education campaign. And then also, there would be a system for those residents who, you know, really would need to opt out of the program, creating that system as well. So then hopefully, the full-fledged program would be launched by April of 2020, and then continue beyond with service and education happening continually. So just an idea of some other costs in addition to some tweaking that will happen to the upcoming contract editing process with AHRC, so that will add the cost of the service. So these are the estimated costs for the support provided by Rural Action for the three-month recruitment phase, and the doing surveys and other educational efforts. And then also, we have here the cost of design and print materials for things like the postcard and the welcome kit and those items. And I think that's it for my presentation, but I welcome questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rainey, for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I know, in speaking earlier today with the City Service Safety Director, that there's also been dialogue between the two of you as well, or different entities. I'll open the floor for questions. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Coss.
President Pro Tem, thank you. I guess my, my, well, this is exciting, and so I'm going to say that right off the bat. You mentioned AHRC there towards the end of the, of your presentation, so are they, will they be the provider?
So they would be the provider for the, the pilot program. It'll just be wrapped into the city's current contract that's going to be revised in June of this year.
And, correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, it sounded like they're, they're already doing, doing this in other, other places, or is this a new, new place, a new, new realm that they're going into?
So Athens Hocking Organics, which is a branch of Athens Hocking Recycling Center, they do have a very small number of residential clients that they do pick up from. Do you remember how many?
Twenty.
Yeah, it's very small, that have the curbside service currently, and then many more customers do the drop-off at the farmer's market. I think that's closer to like 150 are doing, yeah, they take it to the farmer's market. But as far as organics collections across the state, there's really only one other city in the state that has a full citywide organics collection program. So if Athens were to roll this out, assuming no one beats us to it, we would be the second one in the state to have a program like this. Did that answer your question?
It did, yes, yeah. And I just have, I just have one more. I don't want to take the floor for too long, but the, you said the initial pilot program's going to be extended to 200 to 300 residents. How is that selection process? Do you, do you feel like that's just, we'll be lucky if we get that many, or do you, what happens if we're wildly successful and people are just banging down the doors for this?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, based off our conversations with AHRC, they really would only be able to handle that up to 75 per day, which would be 75 per residential area. So we would need to cap it most likely at the 300 residents. And it would, I guess what we're planning so far is that it would be on a first-come, first-served basis. But we do want to make sure that we have residents spread out within each of those. You know, we don't want all 300 on the east side, for example. We want them spread out to the four areas to kind of equalize the collection process.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fall, followed by Councilmember McGee.
For people having television lab, can you describe what the process and the service is that will be used?
Yeah. Like how the...
Well, the, the one question that I would have is what sort of end product that people would be able to use, and that, how does it go and feed all into the reason why we compost?
Yeah.
Describe, like, what happens to your bucket when it goes away?
Yeah, so when the service provider dumps the material, the material in the truck, the truck goes to the Athens Hocking Organics facility, which is out off of Poston Road on the plains, and they have a Class II EPA-certified facility that processes the food waste and turns it into a really rich soil amendment that actually, they've had really high demand from local farmers to, to purchase from in, in recent years. And so food waste diversion is kind of one of these new horizons that a lot of cities are exploring to reach zero-waste goals and, you know, kind of still strive for that philosophy. And so, one other thing I was going to add was that this, this could be something that's explored, is a couple, I think one city I talked to, they have some sort of like reward program where each resident or household would get like maybe a bag of compost each year, which, you know, you probably need more for most of your garden beds, but just kind of a thank you for participating in the program. So that could be a reward thing that's explored by the city as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rainey.
Several questions. The, the first is that you indicated there's an $8,000 startup charge basically for the promotion, I believe. Is that right?
Promotion and education.
And assuming that the program took, is, is there a yearly fee that you would envision?
Yeah, there, there could be. That fee is really just for getting those materials that we would use for promotion and also the ongoing support as far as, you know, maybe it's the things, some of the things I suggested, like administration of the Facebook page, or sending out email newsletters, that, that would be included in that fee. And so some of the things that, you know, if, if things are, materials are being designed as a part of that time, those materials would then, you know, we would think those would be then usable still for once the full-fledged program is, is launched. So we would already have that stuff available to be using, to be used in the full-fledged program.
I suppose I'm, what I'm getting at is, Sarah, do you anticipate this, what the yearly cost of the program would be, you know, if it is adopted by the city?
We do have cost estimates for the full-fledged service, which would be provided by AHRC. I guess we didn't include a quote in there for, for the educational services, probably be a similar number. You know, there's a really wide range as far as, just depending on what the program looks like, you know, AHRC estimates that it could cost the city $300,000 to $500,000 a year for, for collection. So that's for the, the service part in the full-fledged program.
And if I could just ask a second question. As somebody who composts on a regular basis, and my neighbor composts on a regular basis, I was just wondering, is the city doing anything to encourage the residents to, instead of doing this kind of, let's transfer and move our, our waste around, doing anything to encourage neighborhood composting? Because I, I think that's a very good route to go. I know a lot of people who do compost.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a great question. I think that'll need to be something that's addressed perhaps during or after the pilot program. I'm sure people who opt into the pilot, maybe, they probably won't already have their own compost in their backyard. They're excited to have the curbside service. Maybe even people like me, who I have a compost bin, but I would actually be happy for someone else to do it for me. But then, I think part of that program evaluation and feedback could also include a citywide survey of, you know, if you do already compost in your backyard, would you still participate? Or how do you feel about, you know, having this service in, in the city? Other models that we saw, just about the neighborhood composting question, were, you know, many, the city of Minneapolis, they do have centralized drop-off locations for compost, and they piloted that for many years and saw success with that. We decided to go the route of a residential curbside program to just kind of increase participation even more.
Composting also just has a little bit of a yuck factor with it for some people. So in order to get the highest participations, there is a barrier to some people who will never reach the point that they're willing to, to do it in their own backyard for whatever reason. And so in terms of striving for zero-waste goals, that would be another reason to have it as a part of that. You know, your three system, then it would be your trash, your recycling, and your composting going out, would just be to get that much larger participation from your community. And just one more thing on your cost question as well. Part of the point of the pilot is to determine, you know, how much education and support is required by Rural Action, how much time does it actually take the recycling center to stop at each house and take off the bin? So costs, costs right now for a full-fledged program are best guesses, both looking at other programs across the nation, as well as doing our own, you know, we know our costs, and so does the recycling center. So that pilot would then enable us and the recycling center to have a much closer guess on what it would, not a guess, to know at that point what it would cost to provide that service.
Thank you. I believe we have a few more questions on this end of the table. Thank you. That's our call.
Yeah, thank you, Andrea and Erin. It's very exciting. I think it's a great pilot project. I'm wondering if there's been any sort of market study of what the soil amendment, the revenue that could be brought in from selling the soil amendment, and how that might offset the cost of operating the program. It's interesting.
Do you happen to know that from AHRC?
I don't, I don't know the numbers, but I guess I will say it's not a lot. So the, the hope that somehow selling the soil amendment would pay for the cost of the service is like a big whopping dream, like just, it's not ever going to happen. But it, so, you know, AHRC sells a cubic yard of compost for about 40-ish bucks, and what you collect is reduced down to probably like about a quarter's worth of what you have. It gets, gets a lot smaller. But yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't come close to covering the costs of operating a service.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, participation in the pilot program would be free to those who sign up for it. Whereas, once the program launches to the whole city, there would be, and yet to be determined, fee that would be added to the service, to pay for the service.
And it's also been, in our research, that rolling it out with a very strong pay-as-you-throw trash program is the way to go. So some of that year time that you saw too, that Andrea shared on the program, is getting that pricing right, so that composting, you're really incentivized to participate in composting because trash is the most expensive thing, and then recycling and composting still pay for the service, but are done, that if the resident does it, they're going to have a huge trash, or a trash savings. So that's also something to consider during that year timeline, is what. You already have a pay-as-you-throw system, in a sense, but in terms of not having uniform trash cans, it's a little, you know, whoever's there that day picking up the trash might have their best guess of whether that's a 30-gallon container, or whether it's a 60, or whatever. So you'd have much, it would be recommended to have much clearer pay-as-you-throw trash in place as well, at the time of the rollout of the full-fledged program.
Any further questions at that end, or? I would like to briefly ask a quick question, and so far, I also want to say thank you, Ms. Sykes and Ms. Rainey, for your information. Are there some pilot programs out there, or established programs within the country that you referenced? And I was also wondering if you could just offer some insight about where they are located, or which cities they are, and maybe some of those best practices that, that we can be looking at? So if you could just identify a couple of those other cities that, that have implemented a compost program?
Yeah. I would say I talked most extensively with Minneapolis and Milwaukee, but also talked with Palo Alto, California, talked a little bit with, the only other one in Ohio is Huron, up in Erie County. Let me think of the other ones that I talked to. There was another one in California, oh, Kirkland, Washington, which is a little bit more similarly sized to Athens. Tried to go with, with those that were closer to Athens-sized, but some of them, like Minneapolis and Milwaukee, just had really great examples to learn from. So those, I think, were the, oh, and then Hamilton Wenham, Massachusetts, was actually where we got the idea for the little rolling carts.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I can get you more information about those communities if you're interested.
Thank you. I want to check in with the administration as well, if they have any questions or comments regarding conversations.
Thank you. I want to clarify that this pilot program has, presented to us for the cost of Athens Hocking Recycling to do this pilot, in anticipation of the six months and the 200 to 300 households, is $46,000. That's underneath the threshold for the bid. Now, I want to clarify, Andrea, that if the contract is renegotiated, or if it's renegotiated based on current services, this would have to be bid out for any future full-fledged pilot or, or full-fledged program, because it would greatly exceed the $50,000, or any modification to the existing contract would need to be negotiated. And that's what we're looking at for at least the six months if Council chooses to proceed with that. And I too have spoken with some residents that do their backyard composting, and we had a brief discussion, I'm not sure where we landed, about an opt-out, kind of a program that you would do, because some people like going right out back in, they have a nice little flower garden and what have you. Should they have to be forced to pay for a service that they're already providing on their own? That's my initial comment.
Yeah, and it'll just be important to understand how many of those residents feel so strongly that they want to opt out, because, you know, we don't, in order to make the program cost-effective, we don't want, you know, a ton of people opting out so that the service isn't as efficient and costs are higher when less material is getting collected for the service provider. So just wanting to make sure we understand how people feel about it.
Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
You brought up a good point. What is the current level of, of our fund in, in our garbage fund? I know we have a surplus, I don't know how much it is.
I don't have it in front of me. We have probably 1.5 million or more in a reserve right now. But we pay about $1.1 million a year for the services, you know. Again, it's a proprietary fund. Again, it's a proprietary fund, so those funds that are taken in can only be utilized for those different.
Well, what I'm thinking is that in that case, if we do have such a good surplus, the fee for this should be rather minimal.
Again, that's all to be determined in this. This would be covered from the surplus, the engagement with Athens Hocking Recycling and the support provided by Zero Waste Rural Action. And then that will be determined to see whether or not it's a success and you want to continue. And again, there's been talk about getting the uniform trash cans in the future as well.
I guess I answered my questions.
Okay.
I got sort of lost in the weeds there. Sorry.
And and again, this would be a pilot program, so this would be data collection, information gathering to empower the decision-making process.
Right. And things could change and look very different once the full program is implemented.
Well, that's. Any other questions or comments from administration, council that cover it?
I believe so. I think that we may want to hear back from you about in terms of support and whether or not how, what that would look like. It would be, I believe, appropriations ordinance to have additional money appropriated from the garbage fund for this endeavor.
Thank you. I believe that covers it. There's no comments from the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion regarding the CDBG grant application process. Get my notes up here. There's been a quest from the administration to look at some considerations. This would help, discussing this this evening helps expedite the process as we follow our guidelines with discussing the ordinance, looking at potential projects with public hearing, also potentially falling on March 19th and April 2nd and the 16th with reading of the ordinances as well. So the the administration has a couple of projects looking at consideration, allocation of funds, and a priority from the CDBG block grant money would be looking at repair and addressing some of the needs of the Kimes Reservoir Rehabilitation Project. This is a thousand, I'm sorry, a million-gallon drinking water space constructed in 1968. So that storage capacity is a million gallons. This drinking water is primarily south-side provider. That's location of the reservoir then. The project proposal would address some rehabilitation needs to the reservoir, including exterior patching, crack filling, roof sealing, miscellaneous mechanical work. That would be the priority. And that would be, again, eligibility for approximately $150,000 project for that allocation. The backup plan, if that one was not well-received or wasn't accepted, would be the Columbus Road Bike Way Spur Trailhead Project. If you recall, in 2010, the city Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan showed Columbus Road area as being underserved by bike pedestrian facilities, and efforts were were made to increase accessibility for bicycling on that side of town. The city-owned 83 Columbus Road property would be a potential trailhead location to The critical infrastructure project would be approximately $300,000, and this would address some of the city's needs at the wastewater treatment plant. So specifically, this would be for de-watering equipment. We've heard some discussion from Public Works Director about this in the past, the challenges of dealing with with land and accessing locations for the sludge and haul removal. So this would help with that process and empower the city with with simplifying this to a certain degree. I don't know if the administration wants to address that as well or talk a little more about it.
Sure, there are two different programs we're applying for in the same timeframe, and the first public hearing is scheduled for next Monday, I believe. The allocation funds used to be annual, they're now biannual, which is actually helpful as opposed to getting the $75,000 project you can plan out every two years to get more like $150,000. And Kimes comes to the top of the list. It serves a greater purpose, greater need in terms of the population and also, of course, fits in an LMI area because, you know, how many, it serves the population, it's great.
No whole second word.
Yes, and maybe then some, you know, as a backup, as a word.
I think this is a wonderful idea. I'm all for it.
And the Columbus Road Bike Way Trailhead Project, as you know, we've submitted for the recreational trail funding, so we're hopeful we get that. So we'd rather kind of like keep that as a reserve project if we do not get the funding. But Andy indeed has identified Kimes as the most, the critical infrastructure, the last time you did that was the depot lift station. And with the wastewater treatment plant, this land, since we can't land apply, there are belt pressing and paying for sludge haul, which is increasing our footprint at the landfill, and it's a higher cause. This de-watering equipment and in anticipation of receiving a sludge septic, the septic receiving station, of which we receive points off on our loan, this, as we start to get more of that, of course, it would increase. This will allow us the ability to do that and distribute much cleaner water even to the river than we even do now. And he anticipates phosphorus coming in, possibly even this year, the next month or two from the EPA. So those are the identified projects for this year.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Katzis?
Thank you. So with the with the Kimes Reservoir, is that currently not 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 being used?
Oh, no, we're using it. It's in need of repair. We've had some leakage issues. We have done some stop-gap measures, but we really need to put some money towards that and and make sure that it's all secured.
Okay. And then the the critical infrastructure, so a de-watering is different than having like a belt press onsite at the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, they're going to actually kind of study it and get a consultant to look and find out what a best practice was. We had, and I'm not going to come up with the right name, I'm going to use the term like centrifuge, that came onsite for like three or four days a week and gave a demonstration of that. But there are three or four different kind of methodologies and equipment pieces that they would look at before they come forward.
But we would own it and it would be onsite down there on on East State Street or off of?
Yes, they had that one in the, within the last four months was on site, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Other council members?
I said my piece.
Good clean stuff.
Anything else from the administration? Thank you. That concludes City Service and Safety Committee. We are moving now on to Finance and Personnel Committee, which is chaired this evening by Mr. Jeff Reisner. Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Mr. President Potem Butler. Three items here. First of all is appropriations. Who would like to speak to that?
I will.
Okay.
Again, I'm our city engineer and director of Public Works at this time. He's requesting additional $20,000 appropriated and from the storm into operations, professional services. We recently had a event, a sinkhole across from the roller bowl, of which we had to address to see if city infrastructure was causing this or what have you. And that did cost us an unanticipated expense of around $5,000. And in order to have replenished the fund, he's requesting that from the unappropriated balance.
Auditor? Yeah. That's it?
That's, did you have any others to add? No.
You sure there's no more money being?
There's not that much money to even seek at this point, so.
Very good point.
Yeah.
Okay, credit card policy. I see we have the policy on our shared drive here, or a draft, I should say. Can't be policy until we approve it, obviously. I know the auditor wants to speak to this because I've spoken to the auditor about it.
Well, I do want to speak to it. I have to speak to it. I just want to update you on where we are, and I know I've been talking about this for a while. We've been trying to get a handle on where they're going with this. And so the update is the policy has passed in the House, and it has started hearings in the Senate. Last week, they, the state auditor presented a report with some changes, and I meant to forward that today, but I don't think I did, but I will. And it spells out a lot of what it's for and why they're pursuing this. This is the state auditor who wanted this. So I think we can look at that, but after we started this, Laura and I are going to a local government officials conference on March 22nd and 23rd, and one of the first sessions they have is on the new credit card policy. So we both plan to attend that one, and we'll know maybe a little bit more about that. But there is a spot in here, sometimes in the actual bill, it's hard to pick out what exactly what they want us to do. But there is a page in this auditor state report that tells exactly what we need to do. And it has to do with what we, we have to say what we can spend the money on, what we can use it for, and we have to have someone, a review process in place in a way of tracking credit card expenses. And we have to put limits on how much the credit cards can be and a process for using it as far as checking it out and returning it and things like that. So some of the other things that we've talked about putting in a policy, which most people have other things in a a policy, we can make separate or we can try to pass an ordinance that just specifically addresses what the state wants us to address. There is one other thing, if you read the OML bulletin, they, the auditor state also suggested some changes to the current draft, which already passed the House, regarding public records requests for credit card purposes. So I'm not sure where that's going to go, but there is, that's in the OML bulletin that came out Friday. And of course, we don't really have any issue on that, except that we will have to track, currently, we don't track credit card expenses by the credit card. If someone goes to a training and they use their credit card to pay for registration and a motel, those expenses are posted in our expense report under travel and training as opposed to a credit card. So there'll have to be some way, and we've talked about this, it probably means adding account lines in our system to track when those expenses are charged to a credit card. So just kind of in a holding pattern right now. And actually, we've got department heads reviewing that draft policy, sending suggestions. You know, I've gotten questions and suggestions from council and the code office, I think some others, but, and we've talked about it, you know, with the finance, with you Jeff and at our auditor meeting and the mayor and the service safety director. So we're going to keep talking about it. I just want everybody to kind of be ready, and I think one of our big sticking points is who's going to be the monitor who doesn't ever use a card. Can't be our treasurer. They did actually say that specifically. Nor should it be the auditor because I use the credit card for training and conferences. And so nobody has a good idea right now, but we'll we'll come up with somebody. But if anybody in council has any thoughts on that, it can't be anyone who ever uses the card, which is a little bit difficult, so. Because you're looking for somebody you trust also. So I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Well, point of clarification, your topic, it has to be someone who doesn't use the card. But if that person is hired by an employee of the city and works in a department that uses cards by, almost by definition, they are using the card in some way.
Yeah, that's, there are extensions like that. There's no doubt about it. However, not every department in the city has a credit card.
Well, then what happens when that department does get a card?
Well, then you will have to choose someone else or deny the credit card.
Would it be best to have an outside CPA auditor?
I don't know. I could look into that and see if someone else would be willing to.
Completely separated. I mean, how often would they be monitoring? I mean, would it be an every day?
Quarterly, I believe.
Quarterly? So.
It was monthly.
Might be a way to go about it.
Council also has to monitor. These will be more reports that we will be sending.
Oh, good.
For council to review. I don't know that there's an approval process by council.
Approving the reports, the quarterly reports?
I don't, I haven't seen that that's part of the process, but that might be an auditor interpretation, even if it doesn't spell it out like that. So, you know, it's just one of those situations. And if you read this report that I forwarded from the state auditor, that he presented in the Senate committee last week, you'll see, you know, really horrifying example of a misuse by an elected official or a public official, a lot of these elected. So it's typical with some of these things where, you know, the mass is punished by the sins of a few, and that's pretty much what it is. But that's the way it is, so.
And just one other point of clarification. In terms of a public records request, somebody outside wants credit card information of a certain department. Now, does that request, is it processed by that department? Is it processed by the auditor? Is it processed by the monitor? I mean, who has the, I could see a lot of confusion here. A request going to someone in a department and they say, okay, yeah, sure, I'll do it. I'll find the information. But they may not have any, do they have the authority to do that? It seems like we should be speaking with one voice on something like that and not have potential for confusion.
That is an issue from time to time with public records requests anyway. Sometimes people will want something and they'll send it to several people, and people think if they get it, they have to respond, but it's not really their records. And Lisa and I talk about this quite a bit. She was on a public record request last week about vendors, people that we deal with in the city. Her office doesn't track those at all. My office does. I wasn't on the original email, but it was forwarded to me by EPW. And the council clerk has forwarded me several records requests that really come from my office. And so I guess probably it should come through my office because it, part of it depends. If they're just looking for, say, police department expenses, they could probably provide that. If they're looking for all city credit card expenses, then that should come from my office. So we usually work that out.
We need a policy about that.
Yeah, we do. Because I have issues with that with people who try to answer a records request that aren't, well, Lisa and I've talked about this, they aren't truly their records. And we've had this recently because we had a very broad, broad, broad request that went to me and a couple other people. And I went right to Lisa with, hey, look at this. And we, three of us actually had records that, we keep the records that would answer some of the questions. And so we have to be careful that we answer, we don't provide records for another department necessarily. You know, we might have them or think we know, but we, you have to be careful about that. I provide lots of reports to all of you, but we keep lots and lots and lots of other reports besides those. So when someone asks for something, you might not have the complete picture. And it's, it's not really a problem all the time, except there can be a delay if someone who gets a request doesn't forward it to the right person in a timely manner. And then, you know, by the time we get it and have to forward it, it it looks like it took us longer than it should have, but we're pretty good about turning them around in my office because we get them regularly. And so that would be something to think about. This public records issue that the state auditor brought up This public records issue that the state auditor brought up has to do with, the way I interpret it, is someone can, they can ask for records in any format. They can call you, they can walk in your office, they can email you, send you a letter. They don't have to give you their name or tell you why they're asking. And so what also happens is you provide some records and then they, it makes them think of other things that they'd like to see. So then when you start adding on to that request, this, and this is in the OML bulletin, if you want to read this, but it has to do with, if they start out walking into your office, then they start emailing and there's a lag of, or a difference in where their second request starts and the other one ends and things like that. And that, you know, that can be a problem, but he doesn't want it to be a problem. But he, what he's saying is that the gap in the public records law, that, that the court won't consider, it's for the court, not to consider damage requests, when there are gaps like that, that people can't claim you didn't provide the records when the requests, you know, weren't just all in one or straight in line and stuff like that. So, yeah, I think they, they put that in there because they're expecting this new law to, you know, maybe instigate additional requests. But anything we use our credit for, cards for now are subject to public records requests. So anybody who charges anything, those receipts are attached to our voucher.
The credit cards numbers themselves are confidential, aren't they? I hope.
They would be, yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if there's anything else on there that might be confidential, but yes, we wouldn't give out that kind of information. Which is also part of the issue with providing records requests, this very broad one that I responded to, another department is having a bit of an issue because social security numbers are on the records that, that they have. So you can't, you know, sometimes people can come in, you can just show them the records and they can tell you what they want copied, but not if they have that kind of information on them.
Yeah, right.
So I'm, I'm in a position right now where another department head wants old payroll records. Well, they have all that information, they're handwritten in books and they have all that information in there. And so even, you know, other employees of the city, if they don't work in my office, can't have access to that information. So, yeah, there's a lot of things to think about when doing those public records requests.
Any questions from council on the policy, concerns, other plats, administration? Okay. Thank you auditor. And residency requirement, service safety director.
Well, for all intent and purposes, the last three service safety directors have all lived outside the city limits, including myself. I was granted a waiver in 2008. Wayne Key, who was a long-term state service safety director, was granted a waiver, who lived outside, and Ron Chapman, 2000, or 1989. And as you're well aware, you have a new service safety director coming on board here at the, near the end of May, who also resides outside the city. And the request is to proceed with having the ordinance, waiving the residency requirement under the higher revised code.
Question from council?
Well, it seems like a trend.
It, it has been, and, and actually Debbie and I didn't ask for to delve any deeper that far back. There was one service safety director that served about a year and a half, a little longer, who did reside in the city, within that time period, but, you know, people have family and have set roots and they're still part of the community. That is the request. When I went to be the director of the Vinton County Housing Authority, they thought I had three legs or something because I lived in Lewis County then as well. So it's not unusual to be challenged by your county of residence. And that was a county thing, service safety director, the next one lives in Athens County.
So what kind of waivers required from council, was that take the form of a?
It's a simple ordinance that states that, or higher revised code section 735.01 and 737.01, or it's hereby waived. Because there's the service director and the safety director in the higher revised code.
All right, I think we can do that by Monday.
At least start the readings through is all we're requesting, thank you.
Well, that's all I have for finance and, but no.
Thank you, Councilmember Rising. That then leads us to the Transportation Committee, which this evening is chaired by Councilmember P. Katsas.
President Pro Tim Butler, thank you. And we only have one, one thing to discuss tonight on, on our Transportation Committee. And that is, is another street closure in the Court Street. This one is going to be the Boogie on the Bricks. So this is the first evening that we are talking about, about this one, which will be happening on June 30th. And I noticed that Judy Weimer did, did walk in and she is here, she is the event coordinator. And, and actually on your drive, there is a one pager on this. So this is, this is great because there's a, there's, there's a lot of stuff on this, on this document. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm glad that you have the copy, I brought paper copies just in case, but you have a digital copy, I see. Okay, wonderful. So I'm here yet again to request the event, Boogie on the Bricks, which is a street festival music and arts, an event that we tried to kind of, it began with promoting, you know, an event to kind of promote uptown businesses and, and bring people to Athens. And it's kind of grown to a free community event. And to be able to sustain the event, we have a beer garden, we have vendors, food, craft, other type of art and merchandise vendors. And we are requesting the date to be June 30th this year. And the, we have a lot of different, we have two stages that we put together and about 14 different musical acts to entertain everyone. And we always try to kind of think of something different to add to, to the event, to kind of keep it updated and interesting and fun for everyone. There's kids area and this year we're, we're requesting kind of to move the location back to, from, on Court Street from state to union. The last two years, it's been from Washington to Carpenter. And one of the, we've, we've kind of run into some issues with the stage placing, placement, and also kind of interfering with BP's business. So because of those two, those are two of the main reasons that we're requesting to move it back to the, the place that we've had it. We, we've had a lot of success, kind of making it logistically possible to create a, a good flow for the, the traffic, the patrons and just kind of an, an all-around good energy for, for the event. But I think that we'll be able to kind of take a lot of what we've learned over the last couple of years and, and implement that to this location as well.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and open up the, the floor. Does any, do we have any questions from council? Yep, okay. Well, I, I have a few questions, I don't know if administration wants to go first or, I guess the, the, the stage placement, you said there's two stages? So where, where are along these two blocks? And this is just, just for, for clarification, Union would stay open. It would just be Washington would only be the only cross street that would be closed? Is that correct?
Well, I, I mean, it, it would work best, we've, we've managed, because the smaller stages on Union, and we can manage that because we don't have a whole lot of artists that are coming in and a whole lot of stage setup where we would need a whole lot of room for backstage. So Union being open is fine, definitely Washington intersection being closed. And we, it, it has worked best for the, the main stage to be at kind of like a little bit in the intersection of state and court, where in the past, I, I believe, so the intersection would be closed from Congress, like by Casa. But on the other side, one lane would be open to, to go past BP, so down State Street and, and Court Street that way. And that's how it has been done in the past and it seemed to work okay. Work, you know, kind of in some of my conversation or, you know, back and forth, working, collaborating with Ron Lucas, he mentioned that they were only going to request from basically not at all into the intersection. So it, it works best for our main stage to be a little bit in that intersection, just because there's a lot more going on behind that with our bigger acts. So loading in and out as well as just the, the, being able to place the stage at a level spot. And also kind of moving it, maneuvering the, that large stage in that area. So that's, that's what we're requesting.
Okay, okay. And then I think my, my other question was, have you been, now I, I did just do a quick search and I saw that, that Brew Week is in July, July 13th, I believe is when it starts, so there's no overlap there. But have you been in contact with, with the business owners, with the UBA? Have you started to start those conversations just to take a temperature?
No, unfortunately, this is, believe it or not, this is our 15th year and I don't know why, we haven't quite figured out how to, what best way to approach this. You know, when I'm planning, my first thought is, I need a date. I need a date because I cannot coordinate anything else without getting a date. And so my, my initial, the way we've been doing things, like, okay, we got to get the city to approve. And it's only been really within the last couple of years that it's been kind of really strongly encouraged to work with a UBA, which I completely understand, it's just one of those kind of things that I lose sight of. So we're, we're now in contact, Ron Lucas is facilitating that conversation with the UBA.
Member Butler?
Thank you. And I, I appreciate Councilmember Katsas and as well as your acknowledgement of communicating with the entities that the event will impact. We, we've received over the years, feedback, some business owners benefit from the presence of uptown Court Street closings and events such as yours, and some business owners run into frustrations and hassles and, and less walk-in traffic. So, so it is challenging and, and nonetheless, I definitely encourage the dialogue to continue to happen and, and reaching out for those various reasons. I enjoy the event and applaud the efforts and think that it is one of those shining moments in the summer that, that brings in and attracts people to, to Athens and uptown. Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, absolutely.
And service safety director, you had your, your hand up earlier.
I did, I hear what Judy's saying about the two-stage placement, but this was discussed at staff and the safety forces and we discussed and they want to get that intersection open and have it remain open. So we'll continue to discuss. And yes, the UBA is, was scheduled to meet this week, but we're not sure if they are because of being spring break. But we, we'll make sure, before we come forward requesting the ordinance, that we, all those issues have been addressed.
All right. Any more questions? I believe this is a good start and we've got plenty of time to iron out the details. So thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you.
And I get to say that we're done, Transportation Committee is, is finished.
Thank you, Councilmember. That moves us forward to our last committee of the evening, which is Committee of the Whole. I believe, Councilmember Follam, am I correct that you're, are you leading Committee of the Whole this evening?
I was only going to do one thing. And then, then Jeff's going to do one of them.
Okay.
The administration's going to do one.
Acting Mayor Law Director Lisa Lysen.
Thank you.
So there, there was my facilitation.
Thank you. Well, the first, the first bullet point is Athens Molden Machine slash tax abatement.
I wanted to give a little explanation on that. At the end of March, there's a council called the Tax Incentive Review Council and they are scheduled to meet. And city officials do sit on that, I believe that the auditor sits on that, Tax Incentive Review Council. The mayor, the mayor sits on that, Tax Incentive Review Council. And during the preparation for that, it was determined that a step had been missed. In 2016, the Athens County Commissioners entered into an agreement with Athens Molden Machine, and that's Enterprise Zone Agreement. This kind of agreement dates back to the 1980s. So in 2016, when they entered into that agreement with Athens Molden Machine, they were required by the revised code to get the consent of the city, and they did not at that time. I recently talked with the Department of Development and an official there stated that we can have legislation that would ratify the consent. So this is what the administration's requesting. They're requesting legislation to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city and in accordance with the revised code to consent to the 2016 Enterprise Zone Agreement entered into between the Athens County Commissioners and the Athens Molden Machine. So I thought I would give you some highlights of that 2016 agreement and then a little bit more explanation. So the agreement calls for Athens Molden Machine to renovate the building located at 180 Mill Street to house its office, warehouse and manufacturing operation to permit the expansion of its distribution area. Athens Molden Machine will purchase $500,000 in additional furniture, fixtures and equipment with a total investment, investment by Athens Molden Machine of $1.5 million and up to $3 million at the project site. All acquisition, construction and installations to be completed by June of 2019. Within 12 months after completion date, Athens Molden Machine will create the equivalent of 60 new full-time per minute jobs, will provide a minimum of 50% of the cost of employee health insurance and minimum payroll on-site of 2.1 million with 60 full-time, minimum 35 hour per week at an average of $17 per hour excluding the owner's salary. Athens County will grant, so those are the things that Athens Molden Machine will do. And then the county will grant to Athens Molden Machine a tax exemption for real property improvements made to the project site with tax exemption amount of 60% for years one through 10. Each identified project improvement will receive a 10-year exemption period. No exemption shall commence after calendar year 2020 nor extend beyond calendar year 2030. So if Athens Molden Machine does the things that I set forth here, then Athens County will grant a tax exemption, I guess we called it on here, a tax abatement. And as you all know, the city doesn't receive any property tax, but the upside of all this is that new jobs will be created and the city will get income tax.
I'm sorry, but actually the city does receive property taxes for properties in the city. That's why the city has to approve this abatement.
Because that will reduce our property tax revenue from that business. Of course, we'll receive income tax revenue from that business. I'm not saying that my office would, would be against that, but that is why we have to give, give permission, because we won't get the property taxes for properties within the city. We do get property taxes for properties within the city and that is one of them. And so it would reduce the revenue from that property. When we implemented the TIF on East State Street years ago, we had to get permission from the school board because that would affect, they're the other major recipient of property taxes in the city. And as it turned out, they got a little bit more by doing that agreement at that time. And we receive all of the, the value of the property taxes to the city and we send about half of it to the school system every year after we get that. So that is why we are giving permission. Not that we wouldn't encourage that business, but we do receive property taxes and it will affect our revenue from that property.
But isn't the amount of property tax that we get from the county after they collected only about 800,000 a year?
It's, yeah, a little more than that, but I wouldn't say only. That's like our second major, second largest revenue in the general fund after income That's like our second largest revenue in the general fund after income taxes. So it's a large, single source of revenue, but we only get taxes for properties in the city.
And we're not even getting the total value of that.
Well, they keep an administrative fee of 2%. You have to keep in mind also that many properties in the city are tax exempt because they are state-owned.
So in 2016, that agreement, I did check, and the school districts were notified. As part of the agreement, it does state that the school districts were notified. So again, a step was missed and we're asking for legislation to authorize the mayor to consent to the agreement from 2016.
Well, it's already fait complet, so.
Well, there will be review in the end of the month to see how Athens Molden Machine is doing.
So it would require an emergency clause and suspension, et cetera, in order to meet the Turk date.
Can I ask, is there a clawback clause in the contract?
I didn't look as far as that. I have the agreement here and I could look through it.
Maybe before we can, that's a good idea. And also maybe a timeline and the amounts of money that are being talked about would be helpful, like how much property from that particular piece of property, how much property tax we do get. Please.
I guess it's your turn.
Oh, OK. If anybody has other questions? OK. Next on the Committee of the Whole, I wanted to open it up to give people a chance to discuss gun safety with all the horrific things that have been happening, continually happening. As you know, I usually start off my discussions about the erosion of home rule that happens in Athens that the government up in Columbus decides that we just aren't capable of doing certain things down here in the hinterland. And like, and this, I think, is one of the most egregious that I see. I would love to be introducing an ordinance tonight about common sense gun safety issues. I'd like that ordinance to have things such as a universal background check for permit for guns that are sold in the city, prohibiting the sale of large magazines, increasing age to 21 for long guns, and requirement of gun safe for all residential housing. But unfortunately, because of the city not being able to establish our own rules about common sense gun safety rules, that will not be an ordinance, so it will be a resolution. And included in the resolution will also be such things on asking to have the prohibition against the CDC doing gun research and other things that we see when we take this up as a resolution that would help to establish leadership. Have we seen since, you know, the horrific thing that happened again and again, the leadership that is supposed to be there at the state level and the leadership that's supposed to be there at the national level is not coming through. And so it takes us, we put upon ourselves to ensure gun safety. The resolution will point out what we think is necessarily in the city of Athens to help ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. And so once again, we are putting forward a resolution instead of an ordinance because we have had erosion of home rule and we have had an erosion of leadership at the state and federal level. They would refuse to do anything. And so it's time, and this is the one step taking back the home rule, to help save and protect our city and our citizens. So I opened it up for a general discussion. And if you think of things that you would like to see specifically in such a resolution.
Councilmembers, any comments? Feedback or input for Councilmember Fall?
Are there, excuse me, are there any businesses that sell guns in Athens that?
Walmart.
Other than Walmart?
Denim, sports store.
They're out of business. No, the other, sorry.
David.
No, sorry.
Athens hockey, trading.
Trading, yeah. The pawn shop.
Yeah.
They have. And some of the, you know, we do have every once in a while gun shows. Gun shows, you don't have to necessarily have a background check. And that's something that has been talked about for years is a universal background check, which has supported some, like, 82% of the people in the United States support an expanded background check. And our leaders in, especially in Washington DC and the occupant of the White House, have decided that that's just not a priority. So they're still cowed by the NRA. Any other, you can also send things to me by email. I think that we've seen a lot of action and I'm awed and honored that all our high school students across the state and across the nation are taking this up. And maybe, you know, they will kick butt because that's certainly what some people need. We shall go nameless in this room. Thank you.
I'll just briefly acknowledge that I appreciate your willingness to explore this. It's a very challenging topic with arguments on many sides. So I, again, applaud your willingness to look into it. So we have a request from Councilmember Fall to send her any information or thoughts as she works on the resolution. Thank you. That leads us to, if anything else, Councilmember?
Nope.
Good, thank you. Last on this evening's Committee of the Whole is looking at resolution regarding protecting the bobcat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Coachin Butler. Let me put on my bobcat hat. Yes, this is a topic that caught my eye when I first heard about it in the local news, the idea that the state of Ohio is proposing to allow a limited trapping season for the Ohio bobcat. And first, we're talking about the animal, not the mascot. And it's been covered in our local news. They say we'll divide up the state into certain sections and there'll be a limited number taken from this section, that. And the gist of it is, it's all in the guise of scientific research, that the trappers will trap, kill, scan the animal. They'll keep the pelt and then the carcass will then be shipped to a scientist somewhere. And then that scientist will do whatever scientists do with a dead carcass. I mean, why they're putting in that guise, I don't know. Maybe it's to make it more palatable to people like ourselves, when in fact, what it really is, it's a sport. It's a hobby. It's something that people just like to do. And I think this makes it a little less violent. It sounds more permissible. But essentially, what we're doing is you're just allowing a group permission to go into our public forests and take out a public resource, which a bobcat is, as far as I'm concerned. I have as much interest in it as anybody else, slay it and then do it again the next year. And I just find that really reprehensible. I think it's silly. It's just stupid. You know, I hate to call the state of Ohio dumb, but this is pretty dumb. And if that upsets someone, well, so be it. It's my opinion. So I would, I mean, obviously, the city of Athens, we already have laws within our ordinances about governing, hunting within our city limits. We don't allow it. We don't allow trapping of non-varmit-type animals here. You know, you can kill all the rats you want, but you, we don't permit, you know, shooting deer, hunting deer, for example. So this resolution is more of a resolution in general stating that the, I'll pause here. It'll stop sooner or later. Wrong number. So the resolution is a resolution in opposition to be sent to the appropriate authorities stating that the city as a whole is in opposition to this. That we oppose the whole idea, the idea that this is in any way some form of scientific research, but in fact, is just part of a sport. And that's essentially it. I think we have in our audience here an expert.
Not an expert, but.
Well, plus enough.
Does anybody want to say anything for us?
Go ahead, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Riser.
The beard.
I don't have one.
The guy with the hat.
I just wanted to comment. My understanding is that they initially granted some sort of review of the bobcats for a five-year period and that the proposed trapping would basically circumvent that and this is all to be done immediately or very soon. And basically, it would be a one-year period of study rather than a five-year period. And I hope that that will be addressed because I'm quite concerned about the fact that there is a pretty clear element missing that would allow any kind of trapping. And that's the question. We don't know how many bobcats are out there.
Exactly.
So maybe that could be addressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Fall.
I think as somebody who has some experience with the background in wildlife, it's disturbing that one of the ideas is that there might be an unlimited number of permits given. Because you can't really, if you give that many, if you give an unlimited amount, it doesn't really necessarily say that you can reduce the take if you hit the time that you've gotten all the bobcats out, but there's still permits out there. To me, it just smacks of the old, old-time days of how they used to give permits out willy-nilly, you know, for everybody and there would be a, you know, bag limit of one a day sort of thing. And we know how that got us to where we are with some of our, you know, charismatic megaphone of sort of species. It's not, it's not new technology. It's not looking for the future. ODNR has had some real issues, I think, lately with selling out to the highest bidder when it comes to protecting and stewarding our natural resources. And this is just another example of, you know, a powerful lobby going in and saying, we want to have special permission to do something that in the olden days, you know, it's like we can't have anything good. The bobcats are coming back. But man, somebody can make a dollar from it and they're going to go after it. So once again, thank you, Columbus.
I mean, I'm a bobcat. I'm anxious to hear what Heather has. I'm sure she has some facts and everything.
Take the podium.
I'm going to have a long one.
We'll give you a couple of minutes.
Really? That's all?
Just, I didn't say.
My name's Heather Cantino and I live in Athens. And I only learned this, about this issue about three weeks ago. It's the fastest I've ever learned a scientific subject. My background is in environmental education and reading science. Unfortunately, some of the scientists are walking a fine line and some are not willing to speak out themselves. So it's left to people who don't have dependence on ODNR for permits and funding. So I have a lot of empathy for those who may be very concerned but are not able to say so. But we're not seeing them support this, that's for sure. Just a couple of things to address some of the issues you raised. It wouldn't be a year-long study before they implement this because the project is only beginning to collect data. I think their main, the OU study, the four-year study, is only beginning to collect real data this summer. I mean, there's been some preliminary work, but their season is going to start this summer and the trapping season would actually start in the fall. One of the things that I think was not in what I gave you, I did respond to Jeff's request and sent out a packet with the talking points and the draft resolution that I wrote up and had vetted to give to the county commissioners, whom I would also like to pass a resolution. But one of the things in not there, because it's just in some of my recent reading, is that kittens, I think the gestation period is two months and they're weaned after 12 weeks, but they continue to live and be fed by the mother and then follow the mother and learn to hunt over another eight to 12 months. So, and they're born in the summer. So the kittens who are born this year will have their mothers likely trapped and killed and they, of course, can also encounter the trap. So, you know, the trapping season is during the time when kittens are still with their mothers. And of course, cats are curious, so, and they bait these traps with this disgusting smelling stuff to attract them. The, you said guise of scientific research. ODNR has given no evidence that there is any research proposal that calls for carcasses. I think it was made up after the fact and I think they got OU to agree to take them. But if you look at OU's press release and all of the statements coming out of that lab, they talk about non-invasive monitoring. And what I think a really interesting document that I did send to you, and I think is very important in this fight, is the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife's own document that was only, was published only last October, so it's very current, that talks about having a four-year plan to get some understanding of the population and its viability. So that's population, distribution, density. It's a relationship between the two subpopulations, which one of them seems to be reproductively viable, but the other is not. And the other, the southern one in our area, actually depends on migration from the eastern so-called population. So that, studying that relationship and finding out how viable the eastern population is and so on and what the numbers are. They have no information on the numbers. The so-called verified sightings could be the same bobcat over and over again. They've done no analysis to determine how many different animals there are. And so it's basically just a wild guess that is not giving them any real information. But they say in this October 2017 report that they will do this, participate in, they don't even mention OU in it. You know, so I was really confused at first because it sounded like it was very similar, but it was Division of Wildlife's own document. Mike Reynolds is the only name on it. And it talks about doing non-invasive monitoring and says that developing some understanding, developing understanding of the population is critical before a trapping season is implemented because if they went ahead earlier, they would have no way of knowing what level of harvest, they call it, would be sustainable by the population. Another thing that I talked about and, and those talking points were not originally developed by me, but I've edited them. by me, but I've edited them and I've had any changes I made vetted by scientists. The level of mortality from vehicles could be already 20% of the population. The most recent study I read in 2015 on genetics and this complexity of the relationships among the two subpopulations says there may be 450 animals in the whole state, the whole state. And yet we had 96 killed by vehicles and incidental trapping. Coyote traps use the same bait, so there were 12 reported incidental traps. Now, we don't know how many were not reported. We also don't know how many more than 84 or 82 vehicle mortalities there were because some animals may have survived enough to go off into the brush or the woods and die. So we know there were 94 mortalities from those two causes alone in 2017. And if there are only 450 or 500 animals in the whole state, that is about 20%. And even the Division of Wildlife's own really inadequate bobcat management plan that they suddenly threw together and published in February talks about that being a cutoff. Anything above 20% may impact survival of the population. So even without any trapping, there may well be, you know, we may be at the edge of what is allowing these populations to be viable. And I have not received the county-by-county data I've asked for on where these, those mortalities were. So we don't know what kind of population they represent in terms of density. Roads are a, one of the most impactful causes of mortality of, you know, of taking a bobcat's life before it reaches old age. And, of course, four-lane highways are, as one would expect, particularly dangerous. And they do cross, they do cross highways and roads and we have a huge density of roads in this area. One of the things I mentioned, that the bobcat management plan is a really weak and, I think, extremely sloppy or maybe intentionally misleading document, it cites data from remote Idaho about mortality levels being really low unless there's trapping and hunting. But that's not very applicable. And there's actually better data that's not, and it's much more recent, that's not mentioned in the plan from Iowa that shows the seriousness of vehicle mortality on a population. Just a couple of other things in response to things you said, one of you said, oh, that the mission of the Division of Wildlife is to manage our natural resources for all people. So it's not just that we think they belong to us. They do belong to the people as a whole. And obviously, consumptive uses that not only take them but threaten their very viability are not appropriate to an animal that was endangered as recently, it was listed as endangered until 2012 and as threatened until 2014. And one scientist I spoke to asking about the delisting said, as far as they know, there wasn't any scientific basis for the delisting. It was probably just political, maybe just as a step to come to this point. And I think the four-year OU study, you know, may also be, because it's funded by Division of Wildlife, it may also be something that they, they're doing because they do eventually want to have a trap plan. And I think it would be great if we could work toward having a ban. But at this point, the most important thing is to get this, this plan stopped. As I think it was Chris who mentioned, the unlimited number of permits, $5 each. And then they set a quota of 20 bobcats in the southern region and 40, but with thousands of traps perhaps being set when they cost $5 each. Apparently, someone at Division of Wildlife who works there said, "Oh, I'm going to get one. I just want to put one on my wall," you know. You know, I mean, it is an ego thing. It's a, you know, possession thing. It's a sport, but it's also, someone's making money because there are coats in Russia and China, according to the National Geographic article, that sell for $50,000 to $150,000 that use 30 to 40 animals. So someone's making money on this and the Division of Wildlife is probably going to make quite a bit in permits. But as you mentioned, stopping the season, shutting it down just because they get word through the internet or whatever people use to, I mean, I think it's supposed to be online reporting when people actually get a bobcat. But not only do they have to get and assemble that data, they have to effectively reach everybody who has bought a permit and may have a trap out there. And those people have to actually go and, you know, take in their traps. So, you know, that lag time could be huge and allow for many times over the quotas. And since we don't know that even those quotas aren't reasonable in terms of our population size, you know, more than that could devastate the population. So I think it is very important that you speak out to oppose this very dangerous deceptive proposal that is talking about science. I think it's important to, you know, not even be using that word because there's absolutely no basis for any conclusion that it was done for any scientific purpose. You know, as the professor at OU said in response in The Messenger last week or the week before, "My students are conservation biologists. I mean, they're not trained to study carcasses. That's not what this is about." And the idea that these biologists, these scientists, would want to kill animals, that they are spending their careers to try to protect as recently endangered species and the top, one of the top carnivores, coyotes are not native to Ohio. So, you know, foxes and bobcats are about all we have in terms of mammalian carnivores in the state. And, you know, I've been amazed at how many people have, you know, just been absolutely in shock that this is even being considered because, you know, they're not, they're not a menace, they don't overpopulate, they're not nuisances, and people are thrilled when they see one. So this is, it's not only, I forget the word you used, that it's, you know, like, that they're dumb. I think this is an evil, dangerous, disgusting plan. It's a lot more than dumb. It's playing with the survival of a species that we have no right to play with. Let me just see. Oh, public participation I wanted to mention. I've gotten word that Division of Wildlife may be trying to claim that comments that are not unique and original don't count. So that if Sierra Club, as Sierra Club is doing, it's putting out a call for people to submit comments and giving you a, you know, a template. And if people don't change the words, the word I got is that Division of Wildlife wants to just reject those and call that all one comment instead of counting the comments. And I assume the same would be for the petitions, which, you know, may be a little trickier because they may not be individually, you know, the names aren't going to be individually submitted on the comment form. But I think you, as a council, can take, make a stand that all the people who have expressed opposition, in whatever way they have, whether it's by comments individually or using a form or signing any one of the three petitions now that are circulating, with some of them having almost 2,500 names on them, that you expect the council to honor the public participation process. And another important part of that is that the media has not picked up on it much. Our media, the Athens News and The Messenger, have certainly covered the issue a couple of times each at least. But elsewhere in the state, finally, The Dispatch had an article, I'd say fairly weak today, although they did post this, they uploaded this document, which I think was really important. I was one of the people they interviewed and I emphasized how important that is because it is the division's own plan that they've suddenly aborted. And so one wonders what kind of pressure, what kind of...
How much money?
Yeah. Let's see if they want to say any, anything else. I gave you the talking points and the resolution draft that I wrote up for the county, which was vetted by a couple of scientists. And maybe, maybe that's all I need to say. Oh, we did get an extension of the comment period and we got the, the public hearing pushed back by, I think it was three weeks or four, and the decision pushed back only by two or three weeks. It's now May 2nd. And the public hearing, the one public hearing scheduled is on April 12th in Columbus. And maybe that's something you could include in your resolution, is asking for public hearings in Athens. Of course, the open house was a joke. Not only, you know, did it not provide any opportunity for people to hear one another and hear the questions and the answers, but a lot of the people didn't know anything. And, you know, it's the same kind of joke with the Wayne and the BLM where, you know, "Oh, go see them and go see them." And no one had any answers to a lot of the questions and a lot of misinformation. So we had a great session at the community center. We had between 70 and 80 people who spent an hour, hour and a half going over the talking points and people raising different things. Eva Bear was the one who raised the issue of the public health issue because bobcats are one of the major predators on white-footed mice, which are a major vector for Lyme disease because of the way they harbor it. I think it's something with the way that the bacterium is processed or not that white-footed mice are particularly important and serious vectors. And mice and voles and rabbits are primary foods of bobcats. They can catch and will eat deer, but usually fawns and they don't, you know, there are fawns they tend to miss because they are focused on their sight and sound rather than smell. So, you know, a fawn that stays very still doesn't tend to get seen by bobcats, although they will catch some and sick, small deer. And also will scavenge on deer carcasses. So there's certainly deer found in the stomachs of bobcats, but it's usually in the winter and seems likely to be, from the reading I've done, mainly from carcasses. But anyway, it is a public health issue as Lyme disease comes down into this area to be thinking about the predators on the vectors of Lyme disease. But anyway, I think public hearings are really important so that the word can get out because so far there's not, I even talked to someone in Athens County just a few days ago who had not heard of the issue at all. She apparently doesn't read the papers.
Does the governor have any authority in this?
Has some political power, you know. I think we need to encourage people to call the governor's office and write the governor because he can, I think he can stop it from what I've been told and, you know, maybe with his political aspirations.
That may be the way to go.
Well, it's not the way, it's one way. I think submitting comments by the end of the comment period, March 31st, is very important. And, you know, people can sign petitions too because then those numbers show up more easily. Then we'll be able to get the numbers. Roxanne Groff has put in public information requests for all the comments, but we haven't seen any yet. She is also the person who got this, which is not available on their website. It's not something they advertise that they, as recently as October, were saying, "This is essential that we do this before we open a trapping period." Any questions?
How much, council, questions? Katsas?
I just actually have just one additional comment as I was listening. Because I actually have something to add about the population of bobcats. Through my work with Wayne National Forest and the Baileys Mountain Bike Trail Project, they had a couple interns last summer from Ohio University setting up cameras and tracking wildlife. And in a forest parcel, it's 9,000 acres, so we're talking something that's approaching one and a half times the city of Athens, they found two bobcats.
That many, huh?
That's, yeah, that's...
Wow.
They were probably both females, too.
The bobcat range can be, a male can have a home range territory of about 15 miles across. And they do travel, you know, they'll go into new areas.
It's a lot of wandering. Member Butler, you had a question?
Yeah, can comment, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cantino, for presenting and I appreciate your research and passion. I attempted to Google one of the articles, I think, that you referenced from National Geographic and it's, what I'm reading is horrific and sad and frustrating. One of the quotes from this investigative reporting article is acknowledging that America's trapping boom relies on cruel and grisly tools. You know, some of the traps that are still in use have been outlawed in more than 80 nations, from Austria to Zimbabwe. The old-fashioned steel jaw trap, which is still being used in parts of this country. The trap then obviously is, you know, slamming on the paw of the leg of the animal, holding it in a trapper until the trapper arrives. The bones can be broken, tendons are torn, flesh is frayed. Animals only break free either by chewing or twisting off their own paw or limb. I don't think this is something that we want to support in Ohio.
Right. And one of the things that I just, that made me think of is that The Messenger said other states permit, and the reporters I talked to couldn't understand the difference between some other states making a statement like some other states versus other states. So people think that it's permitted around Ohio. It's not. Indiana does not permit it, although they're fighting this battle. New Jersey does not. California has recently banned it. So, you know, it's not that that's the norm and especially in states where the animal has been listed as endangered or in New Jersey, it's actually still listed as endangered, that it's, yeah. But I agree for sure that it's a disgusting sport, a way of earning money if that's, if it's doing that for anyone and people have no business. Our state has no business supporting that and seeing that as normal and as something to be brought into what our state does in the 21st century. I mean, it's really barbaric and primitive and really disgusting.
Yeah, I would concur. And I would encourage any of us on council as well, as the administration, to have dialogue with the university, to also challenge them to oppose and, you know, this kind of process and support legislation that's in opposition of the bobcat trappings. It seems sacrilegious for a high university whose mascot is the bobcat to, you know, support or proceed with legislation that would support such inhumane activities. And I also, I'm glad that Councilmember Katsas offered his acknowledgement because one of the notes that I made in listening to you speak was, in today's day and age, with technology such, you know, accessible and at our fingertips, why would we not support drones or deer cams or other infrared technology to research this kind of information in our woods and in our forests? To me, that just makes much more sense than what's been presented.
Right.
And it's not that the scientists are saying this would be useful in any way.
Right.
They have, you know, several means, you know, cameras, training dogs to find the scat and they can actually identify it to the animal. They can do a genetic analysis from the scat. So they don't, they don't want or need this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Well, that's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember.
We'll get something together for Monday.
Thank you. To know further comments that I believe were... That, I believe, we're wrapping up this evening. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and involvement in our committee meeting. Thank you, those of you in TV land, for tuning in, following, following us. We are closing up and wrapping up around 8:52 PM. We are now adjourned. Thank you.